...fact that this meeting is being livestreamed and also recorded. We always start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and we also ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sonato, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Ryan, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sonato?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. We have a quorum. I hope everybody got a copy of the agenda. I assume they're still over at their desk if you didn't. We have two public comment periods, one in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn. And you're welcome to speak both times or if you just want to speak one of those two times or if you're just here to listen, that's fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters and also if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes out of respect for people's schedules, we would appreciate that courtesy. We, at every meeting, we set aside time, if any of our elected roll officers are in attendance, for their opportunity to speak, but none of them are here today. That takes us to public comment. If you have a comment, we'll certainly recognize you and if you'd state your name for the record, we'll be glad to hear what you have to say. So I'll open the floor. Yes, sir, Mr. Messner.
Phil Messner? Can I cut in from you? Do you have something to say?
You're fine in your seat, wherever you prefer, if you'd like to sit here or back in your seat, either way.
Yeah, that sounds good. Is this mic for there?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Good morning. Bill Messner, Chairman of the Constitution Party of Lawrence County.
Sir, sir, oh, I'm sorry, you're going to address us, right?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, today's agenda, looks like you're going through contracts for direct image copy. I'd like you to consider and analyze if there's any conflicts of interest with Andrea Nicole Sincere and the owner of that entity, see when it's been put out for bid last, or even if you are allowed to no-bid that contract, I'd ask you to put that out for bid. Whatever's on, I don't have these, those actual contracts in front of me. So on Wednesday, November 26th, at about 9:45 a.m., I entered the Commissioner's office to retrieve a copy of the complaint and evidence from the election board. I was standing facing the counter and Mr. Kennedy walked through the swing gate as I said, "Good morning, Mr. Kennedy." I started talking to the administrator, one of the two that were there, and Mr. Kennedy, paraphrased, perhaps he'll be able to clarify, threatened me by indicating that I better research before posting anything about it, but that's paraphrased, like here, Mr. Kennedy, because he actually indicated something of that nature. I turned to him and indicated that his mess that he left for Wilmington Township had forced the property taxes to be doubled and Brian Swisher disdains Mr. Kennedy with something of that nature. I turned back around to the counter. Mr. Kennedy threatened to suppress my freedom of speech and told me either keep his wife's name out of my mouth or something to, don't involve her in politics, like here, what Mr. Kennedy said. So I'm asking Mr. Kennedy, in response, to repeat what he said to me and why. And I'm going to be filing charges against Mr. Kennedy for his illegal actions. Back to the election complaint, that's why I was there. Watched the video, not once did Miss Beth Verterano's name come up. Why wasn't she mentioned during that session? How did it get to Mr. Vogler? I understand, and you correct me, that the complaint went from the party, whether Ms. Harrison, Damaris, or Beth Verterano. So the problem is, is Miss Beth Verterano giving favor because she's a product commissioner and access to Mr. Vogler in that regard? I went up on Wednesday to get a copy of the postcard and also a copy of the complaint at the Commissioner's office. And they had just physically locked it down to the Lawrence County District Attorney. But you don't keep copies of them. It's interesting. In our office, something that is, that is referred to the District Attorney, I talked to Mr. Medor last night, and they don't, you don't have a copy of it. So that, so now I'm in the process of getting a copy of the complaint. What I see is my due process of law, and we'll go into this, is not being followed. Have you ever denied an election complaint? Mr. Vogler, I know you've been sitting on the board for, you know, two decades perhaps or around, and so, and then after the meeting, even though Mr. Vogler gave Ms. Harrison and Mr. Damaris plenty of chance, almost like, let's get out there and talk, after the, after the meeting was adjourned, you actually called for her to talk after the meeting was adjourned. I wonder what you said there? It's very interesting, seems like a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I'm going to stop you right there and I'm going to tell you what I said.
Oh, it's on your time, it's on your time, Mr. Vogler.
You're fine.
No, 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 it's on your time, this is my, are you cutting into my time?
I'm giving you more time, I'm going to speak.
Okay.
Mrs. Morrison recently lost her husband. I went over to her and expressed my sympathy on the passing of her husband. Thank you.
I'm trying to go ahead.
Please continue, you have extra time, please continue.
Okay, thank you. So neither Mr. Damaris or Ms. Morrison spoke, the complaint wasn't read, the postcard, basically you did not indicate what statute, law, or code, even though it's not your, not your position, you just turn it over to the District Attorney. I would think you'd listen to this, solicit and say, okay, does it hurt feelings, is it, what is the statute code for legislation before you just turn it over? So right now, yesterday, I got a call from Detective Wallace. So you know it's downstream of when you pass it off? He called me to start an investigation. I wanted to see the complaint or the postcard. He's under no requirement to provide that to. So here the Constitution Party is being the defendant in this process. We can't even get the evidence, they're just going to start an investigation, et cetera. So what's also interesting is the legal women's voters, their pamphlet is sitting inside the District Attorney on, in their office, in their waiting room, on the table. There's no way that we can get a fair, fair product, due process of law. Legal women's voters are already in their office, interesting. Going forward, I'm going to ask you to consider tabling any type of funding to the Newcastle Library. Requesting that funding be suspended until a full investigation is completed concerning elected officials, potential conflict of interest with Andrew Henley, Newcastle Pride, the Prism Initiative, and Third Independent Church. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any business, personal, or government conflicts of interest with Mr. Andrew Henley? Mr. Sonato? Do you have any business, personal, or government conflicts of interest with Mr. Andrew Henley? Mr. Vogler? Do you have any business, personal, or government conflicts of interest with Andrew Henley? Have you ever been or are you now in a relationship with Andrew Henley? So I've completed a walk through the Newcastle Public Library and they have graphic items accessible in rubber-made material, accessible to toddlers. That's why I asked you to stop funding. There's also other organizations that'd be happy to submit, we have evidence that are holding and using tax dollars for these activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messner. Are there other public comments at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, again, we will reopen public comment prior to adjournment. Moving along, under fiscal and contractual, we have, keep in mind the Commissioners did not meet a week ago, so we have a bit of a backlog of warrant registers that have been provided to us by the County Comptroller's Office, which is, they are also known as the Check Reconciliation Registers. And they are dated November 17, 18, 19, 20, 25, and 26. And gentlemen, I'll give you whatever time you need to look them over. Whenever you're ready, I could accept a motion for us to accept these documents from the Under written, I'll make a motion to accept the documents. I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Also in our packet are the minutes of the November 18 Commissioners' Meeting. And once again, Dan and Chris, please take whatever time you need to look them over and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to adopt the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second. Motion. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion or concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under written communications, we've received three documents that will enter into the record. The first, these have come both to the Commissioner's Office as well as the Planning Office. The first is from a company out in Union Township, A.M.G. Chrome, based at 207 Friends Drive. They are submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, the Air Quality Division, a plan approval application for the construction and installation of air emission sources at their facility in Union Township. The second document is sent to us by C.E.C., Civil and Environmental Consultants, out of Athens, Pennsylvania. They are writing on behalf of National Fuel Gas Supply Corporation regarding a facility that they own in Slippery Rock Township. Proposed project involves the conversion of the existing mainline valve and spring-loaded regulator one to a rupture mitigation valve. Project will also include the installation of an actuator, piping modifications, and installation of power and communications. The existing facility gravel pad will also be enlarged by approximately 1,526 square feet to accommodate the new equipment and a new fence will be installed around the perimeter. Total limit of disturbance is approximately .2 acres. They are submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection an application for a general permit for maintenance slash replacement of water obstructions and encroachments, G.P. 11, for wetland impacts. And based on the map they have submitted to us, this is located on Center Church Road in Slippery Rock Township. Finally, Flowline Corporation, based in Shenango Township, 1400 New Butler Road, is, they are writing to advise us that they intend to apply to D.E.P. for the renewal of their air quality state-only operating permit for their facility on the New Butler Road in Shenango Township. Gentlemen, could I have a motion to accept, enter these documents into the record? Make a motion to accept the documents. I'll second. Thank you. Any concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move down to alls. Next on the agenda would be staff reports. Amy McKinney, the Director of our Planning Office is with us. Amy, good morning. I appreciate you joining us, I think you have an update for us.
I do, so the Commissioners passed a resolution, I think it was November, November 18th, Ryan, in regards to going out for an R.F.Q., which is a request for qualifications, where we solicited for engineering services for, this would be for structural engineers. That resolution was passed at that meeting and then we advertised it twice, was it, the twelfth, the twelfth, your special meeting you had on that Wednesday, the twelfth. And then we advertised it after that twice. The R.F.Q.s were due yesterday by 3 o'clock to my office. We also sent out invites, which you are allowed to do, to engineering firms that we are familiar with, and we received one. And so I'm going to take the time to review over those qualifications and the ones we received it for. Again, these are just, there's no funds attached to this, there's no numbers attached to this, it's just, basically, there are qualifications as a structural engineering service, and that was Gibson Thomas Engineering. They have offices all over, but their main office is located in Lake Rose, Pennsylvania, so. I received those yesterday, haven't had a chance to review them or anything. I think the idea is for me to take a look at them, make sure they're okay, they meet the qualifications that we are looking for in a structural engineering firms, and then review it with Joe and, and then present that at the Commissioners' Meeting. Probably not next Tuesday, the following Tuesday, the 16th.
Amy, thank you, I'm assuming too, they were submitted timely now?
Yes, yep, I received them on time. They were due yesterday by 3, you know, they were up yesterday around 12 o'clock.
Okay, that's good to know. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Amy? Mr. Sonato? Thank you, Amy, and we'll look forward to hearing back.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Appreciate all your help. Take care, Amy.
See ya.
Commissioner reports and comments today. Mr. Sonato, you get to go first.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. It was a holiday weekend last weekend and I had an opportunity to stop out at Shannon High School for the Angel Festival of Trees, I think it's the test one they had in Shannon, but that event goes back, I would probably say at least 30-plus years. Just to note, the one, the tree up in the office, I bought that tree back in 1995 at the Festival of the Trees when it was down in this Spanish Rite Cathedral. It's been redecorated a few times over the years and I know that, that that's, and Ryan, last year we did it and it was nice and some Festival of the Trees is still going strong. They had a very nice turnout and I'd like to commend Superintendent Ian at Shannon for really putting that event back on, getting it to where it is and a lot of vendors from the community were there, a lot of entertainment, so. Little time I spent there was very enjoyable, so I just want to commend them for that. It's a tradition, it goes way back and see that, we presurrect the event, it's a good thing. Also this Friday, I want to have an opportunity to go up to the Northwest Commission as I serve on that board and I will be going up there, up in Oil City now, that's where they live the festival. Look forward to that event on Friday. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Let's see, looks like I'm next. I want to call your attention, I'm going to jump all the way down on the agenda to announcements and make note of a correction under item C. We had originally planned to have a prison board meeting on the 15th of December. We've had to change that. Since you're Chair of the Board, may I turn it back over to you?
Yeah, thank you. Just noticed that. Yes, we are going to be changing the monthly December prison board meeting to this Thursday, which will be December 4th. Things like the Bocke deals, there are a few actions we have to take in timely fashion. So we're actually going to be canceling the meeting on the 15th, theoretically moving that meeting to the 4th of December. Ryan, you sent out the public news yesterday, so it should be in the newspaper and it's been advertised, so it will be on at noon on December 4th.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. As noted, Mr. Sonato chairs the seven-member prison board. The only other thing I'll make note of is that our expectation is that next Tuesday at our public meeting, we will be introducing the proposed 2026 county budget. And it will be on display for, as is required by state law, it'll be on display for 21 days and our expectation is that it will be adopted on Tuesday, December 30. State law requires that we have a budget in place by December 31 and state law also requires that it be balanced. Our expectation is we will comply with state law. That's all I have and Mr. Kennedy, I'll turn it over to you.
I have another question.
Thank you, Dan. We will move on to new business and we have the first resolution, what number is this one, Ryan?
378.
Thank you. Resolution 378 is a maintenance agreement with Direct Image Copy Systems. Joe, you have the resolution in front of you, I want to, I want to clarify one thing under item one. It says authorization hereby given to enter into a comprehensive maintenance agreement with Direct Image Copy Systems, Inc. And then it says for the Office of, and then it says Department, what should, is that?
It's all departments.
Okay, so we should say all county departments?
Yes.
Okay.
And Commissioner?
Yes.
I believe that this is Resolution 379.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm seeing that we had Resolution 378 was a transfer of funds that we did from the DA at the last, two weeks ago. It's been 379.
Yes, oh, it is, my apologies.
All right, we'll make that correction, this is Resolution 379. The maintenance agreement would be applicable to all county departments. The annual, pardon me, the annual lease agreement cost is $3,069. Questions, gentlemen? Chris, any questions?
No.
Dan?
No.
One of you wish to make a motion for us to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt this. And I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, Joe or Ryan, I'm going to need your help on number 380, are we?
This is for the Commissioners' Office.
This is specifically for the Commissioners, okay.
Yeah, it's for our, our competition.
Okay, so 380 is for a maintenance agreement specifically for the Commissioners' Office, so I'm going to, under item one, where it says for the Office of Department, I'm going to scratch Department and say Commissioners. There are no objections. And again, as noted, this is a maintenance agreement, renewal of a maintenance agreement with Direct, Direct Image Copy Systems. The cost would be $875 per month. Dan, any questions? Chris?
No.
Would one of you wish to make a motion for Resolution 380?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 381 pertains to our Public Safety Department and Rich Hoover is with us this morning. Rich, if we'd be kind enough, I hope you're well today?
I am.
And again, I know you folks had a busy morning out there with
Yes.
weather conditions. It looks like they're starting to improve.
Yeah, right down here, it's, they're taking care of now.
That's good, yeah, that's good to know. Rich, you have in front of us an electricity purchase contract for the Public Safety Building itself in Hickory Township, if I'm not mistaken. And this, this agreement would be with A.E.P. Energy for them to provide those electric, electricity services for 12-month fixed rate. What, what more do you need to pass along to us?
We have a contract with Clark Energy Management with hazardous cost-effective proposals for the electric supplier. So, you know, he procured 46 suppliers below his price and A.E.P. came in with a low rate. We were formerly lax with I.G.S. Energy, but A.E.P. came in with a lower rate.
Quick question, I hope you're able to answer it. As I said, it's specifically the Public Safety Building itself in Hickory Township. For our communication towers around the county, obviously they run on electricity. Does that fall under this as well, to your knowledge?
For the ones that we own, yes.
You're right, that's true, some of them we rent.
Yes.
Yes.
The ones that we own.
They would fall under?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich, very much. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Rich? Thank you. Mr. Sonato?
Oh, yes, quick question, Rich, what's your forecast?
I wish I knew. Right now, right now they're not calling for any additional precipitation, so, you know, it's still going to stay, stay cold, but no new snow as of right now, so. You know, the three to four inches that we received is what we're going to get here in a couple days.
I think it's at the higher end, at least in Indian Township, it's at the higher end.
Yeah, I, I live in some type of a snowbank in the Shannon Township, so, I have a little bit more there also.
All right, thank you. Chris, thank you. If there are no other questions, this is Resolution 381. May I have a motion, a length of motion? So, contract. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Dan, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Rich, always nice to have you here, if you need to head back, we understand.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich. You take care, stay safe.
You too.
Thanks again. Children and Youth Services Offices with us today, it looks like you have a contract. Donald Andrews is going to talk today, great to have you, Donald, welcome. Mr. Vowles, good morning.
Good morning.
Pleasure to have both of you here. This is Proposed Resolution 382. The organization with which you like the contract is Reaching Milestones LLC, based up in Mercer County, but Donald, I'll let you fill us in on all the details.
Yes, so this is a new group home, they just opened this year. I had a chance to go toward the facility myself last week with, along with another staff member. It's a great facility, they're branded, they're excited to get started. Their proposed rate is $172.02 a day. They are based out of Mercer County. They, I think it's important to note that they have accepted a child who historically has been difficult to place, many providers say no. They do meet the criteria for the state definition to be defined as a complex case unit. So I think it's important to note that they are willing to take our more difficult children, many work providers are obviously not. The alternative to this child, if they do not go to this group home, would be most likely out in the eastern part of the state, somewhere around Philadelphia.
Yeah, the proximity is certainly a nice aspect to this.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, that is all.
I'll see if Mr. Sonato has questions.
Yes, we use this company before.
We have not, they're branded, they just opened this year.
I know we've had issues with people over in Philadelphia.
Yes.
Thanks, this is, it's, it's, I think it's close as it is to certain needs.
Yes.
And you say it's a brand-new company?
It's a brand-new company, yes, they just opened this year.
Okay.
This would be the first child they actually take in, okay.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Donald? Thank you. You've heard Donald's report and recommendation, this is Resolution 382. Would one of you gentlemen care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Donald, always nice to have you here and same goes for you. Mr. Vowles?
Thank you, gentlemen.
If you have to head back on the street, we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, both.
Thank you.
We move on to Proposed Resolution 383, which is, we do this every year at this time, we set forth the calendar for our meeting schedule for 2026 and I'm going to walk through this because I think I see at least one adjustment we're going to need to make. But for the Commissioner meetings, unless you gentlemen object, we will continue to meet every Tuesday at 10 a.m. except on the following dates. March 17, that would coincide with the Spring County Commissioners of Pennsylvania Conference in Dauphin County. May 19 is the primary election and historically, the Board of Commissioners does not meet on Election Day. Courthouse would be open, but we do not meet. On August 4, that would coincide with the Annual State County Commissioners Conference, this year will be in Monroe County. November 17... November 3 is the General Election Day in 2026. We will not have a commissioners' meeting that day. And then Tuesday, November 24, the Fall County Commissioners State Conference, which will take place in Dauphin County. So those five dates, those five Tuesdays, we will not have regular commissioner meetings. Next is Annual Salary Board. Now, the date is correct. The date is accurate. The county code stipulates that we must have an annual salary board meeting on the first Monday of the New Year, which would be Monday, January 5. The time, however, we're going to have to adjust that because in the morning of January 5, there will be, from what I understand, two swearing-in ceremonies in the courts. We've been advised by President Judge Cox that at 10:00 a.m., we will be holding a ceremony to swear in the district attorney, the registered recorder, the two district judges who were on the ballot. I know I'm missing sheriff. The sheriff, the new sheriff. How could I forget the new sheriff? That's at 10:00 a.m., and then, from what I recall, that's in courtroom two. And then at 11:00 a.m., there will be a second swearing-in ceremony for the three newly-elected judges of the Court of Common Plead. We comprise, the three of us make up three of the four permanent members of the annual salary board. I'd like to consult with Mr. Prestipine. I mean, we can, I think maybe what we can do is choose a time. If he has concerns, we can always revisit. Would that be all right with you?
Yeah.
If we pick a time now?
Yeah.
We run a past him. If he feels that we need to do it at a different time and has good reason to, are you both comfortable with that?
Yes.
And that being said, obviously, we want to meet in the afternoon. I'm thinking 1:30 or 2:00. You'd have
I think two. You'd have an extra time, especially if your judge is getting sworn in.
That's true. And then, of course, Judge Cox, if he's available, would have to come down for that meeting. You thinking 2:00?
Yeah, I think he wants to be there for that.
Right. Do you have any objection to 2:00?
No, too close.
Okay. Let's change that to 2:00. And again, as courtesy, we'll consult with the county controller, Mr. Prestipine, to make sure he's okay with that. Moving down, Salary Board will meet on an as-needed basis over and above the annual salary board that is a statutory requirement. The Retirement Board, which is comprised of the three commissioners, the county controller, and the county treasurer. We've been meeting quarterly in the past, and it looks as though we'll continue to do that. February 10, June 16, August 11, and November 17. Those are all Tuesdays. They are all in this room following the conclusion of commissioners' meeting. And those meetings are open to the public. The Board of Elections will meet as needed. We generally, if Mr. Germaine has a need for us to convene, we generally honor his requests. So that will be on an as-needed basis. The Prison Board, which consists of the three commissioners, the president of judge, the county controller, the district attorney, and the sheriff. Right now, we have it plugged in as the third Wednesday of each month at 12:00 noon in this room, but I'll refer to the chair of the prison board. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I've spent that tradition, once the two years I've been here, and I'm told that's always been the way. So I haven't bothered keeping it.
Thank you. Dan, you're comfortable with this? Okay, thank you. So with the exception of us changing the time of the annual salary board meeting on January 5, we're going to make that 2:00 p.m., pending consultation with the controller. This is proposed Resolution three eighty-three. Now, my recollection is that if we approve this, then this will then be put in the newspaper as per the Sunshine Law. There'll be a public notice to this effect. Discussion. Dan, anything?
Nothing.
No concerns?
Nothing.
Okay, Chris?
Not straightforward.
All righty. Well, may I have a motion for proposed Resolution three eighty-three?
I'll make it. And I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution three eighty-four is a proposed budget transfer falling under the commissioner's jurisdiction. The proposal would take $6,300 from the commissioner's contingency line item and apply it to the Black Fly program. And, boy, Joe, I'm racking my brain. I'm trying to recall which department, is that Penn State or?
That's, I believe that's
For conservation?
Conservation. And that money does get returned at some point in the year. We get reimbursed for what we paid for. They basically invoice us heading into, or the end of the year, sometime early in 2026, we will receive reimbursement for the amount that we pay.
I appreciate that. I apologize because there's the other program that involves mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes.
This is Black Fly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, man. I'll see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No.
No? Dan, anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is Resolution three eighty-four. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion. We accept the Resolution three eighty-four. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Item six on the agenda would be transfers. I'm going to enter these into the record as we approach the end of the year. It's traditional that the number of transfers tend to increase. Dan and Chris, as I go through these, if you have a question on a particular one, please start it. We can address it. Otherwise, when we get to the end, we can take these into consideration. First, the county coroner's office has submitted a request for a total transfer of $3,600, all coming out of their equipment lease line item. Eight hundred is going into their telephone line item, and 2,800 is going into their hospital slash postmortem line item. The next one, the treasurer's office is asking for a transfer from his contingency, his office's contingency, of $1,482.63. He'll move that into his materials and supplies line item. Next would be Mental Health and Developmental Services. I want to make note, on the printed agenda, it says MHDs for maintenance and supplies. Please make note, that should say maintenance and repairs. So what the MHDs office is asking for is a $5,000 transfer from their maintenance and repairs line item into their office minor line item. Jail requests the following. Total transfer is $133,400. It's broken out as follows. From their grocery line item, $75,000 into salaries of correction officers. From their contingency, $7,000 into their overtime line item. From telephone and internet, $11,000, also into their overtime line item. From their travel and training line item, $400 into vehicle expense. And then $40,000 would come from their salaries of other staff into salaries of correction officers. Under the commissioners, the request is for a $350 transfer from contracted services into that of equipment lease and rental. Also, under the commissioners, is a $125 transfer request from contingency into cable slash Court Administration is asking for a $500 transfer from their contingency into their association dues line item. District Judge Nicholson's office is requesting a $166 transfer from their contingency into their subscription line item. Children and Youth Services is asking for a $750 transfer from contracted provider care into their water and sanitation line item. The jail is requesting a total transfer of $160,000, all of it coming from opioid contingency line item. $14,000 will go towards the medical expenses line item, and $146,000 will go towards the contracted medical, the company being Prime Care, and this covers their monthly charges and material expenses. Apparently, it's been determined that that's a legitimate expense for the opioid fund?
Yeah, we approved the opioid a few weeks back, Commissioner. And they had a plan approved by the opioid trust out of Harrisburg for MAT services is what that goes to.
I see.
The Prime Care providers.
MAT being?
Medic, 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 how do I want to say it? Medical assisted treatment.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The, also, under Mental Health and Developmental Services, they, coming back to MHDs, they are asking for a $1,400 transfer from their contingency into their telephone line item. The domestic relations office is asking for a $289 transfer from their contingency into their telephone internet line item. District Judge Russo's office is requesting a transfer of $90.60 to come from their contingency into their equipment lease line item. The Human Resources Office is asking for an $80 transfer from their materials and supplies line item into their telephone line item. Coming back to the jail, the jail is asking the following. The total amount being a transfer of $23,340. It's broken out as follows. From their travel and training line item, $1,040 into their gas line item. I assume that's gas for heating, to your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. $10,400 from maintenance and repair line item into that of salary of corrections officers. And then from maintenance and repairs, also, $11,900 into their overtime line item. Court Administration is asking for a $20,000 transfer from their court-appointed counsel, assuming it's court-appointed counsel, line item into that of contracted attorney line item. Also, from Court Administration, from their contingency, they are asking for a $1,500 transfer into their maintenance and repairs line item. The monetary's office is asking for an $800 transfer from their travel and training line item into their telephone and internet line item. Also, the monetary is requesting an $8,000 transfer, again, from their travel and training line item, pardon me, into maintenance and repairs. The public defender's office is asking for a transfer of $608.62 coming from their contingency into their telephone line item. The commissioners request a $497 transfer from contingency, commissioners' contingency, into the telephone line item. Mental Health and Developmental Services is asking for a $500 transfer from their contingency into the electric line item. And I'll note, if you have an agenda in front of you, there are items EE and FF. Those are duplications. We actually acted on them, or will be acting on them. They're listed earlier in this listing. So if you would scratch the last two, because we've already entered those into the record. Now, I'm going to see if my colleagues have questions, and I'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
The other one, public defender's contingency, the telephone, we said 608.62, 608.97.
Whoops, I misspoke. I apologize. Thank you for the correction.
That's all.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for repeating me. Straight and narrow. Mr. Sanado?
No.
No? No questions? Joe, anything that we need to add?
No, just about every year.
Yeah, it is. This is something that happens just about this time every year. Gentlemen, may I have a motion for the approval of the requested transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested transfers. And I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Couple of announcements. This Board of Commissioners will reconvene one week from today, Tuesday, December 9, at 10:00 a.m. in this room. It's open to the public. The Lawrence County Planning Commission will hold their monthly public meeting on Wednesday, December 10, at 12:00 noon at Edward's Restaurant on Wilmington Avenue in the city of Newcastle. And as we noted earlier, the monthly meeting of the prison board will be held this Thursday, December 4, at 12:00 noon. It's open to the public. It will be in this room. And as noted, the Sunshine Law public announcement will be forthcoming in a timely manner. This takes us to public comment. I'll vote for the floor again if there are any comments from the floor. Mr. Messner?
Just to confirm, Resolution three eighty, that's $875 per month for a copier, ten copiers, maintenance only?
Bear with me just a second.
In the commissioner's office?
Two copiers in the commissioner's office. That's the lease agreement. We do not own it. So that's the, that's half the copiers in.
Oh, they said maintenance.
It's under the maintenance, we're paranoid.
Okay, so you have two, so at $10,000 a year for two copiers. Three seventy-nine, $3,069 per month for thirty copiers annually. Like, I understand you have different, you have different cost codes within, but I just think, I mean, you know, what's a $3,069 for? Is it per annum, per month? Is it every copier that the county has in every building?
It's the maintained copiers that we have in every copy.
This building?
Yes.
So like Newcastle Police Department?
We don't, we have nothing to do.
No, the detective's office there. So any, you know, any, and so it's not a lease, it's pure maintenance. Do I have the ability to see those? Are they on the table, those contracts?
They would be available for public meetings.
Public meetings, okay. And a copy of them. If they're on the table, can't prevent me having a copy.
Sure.
All right. Also, as you're coming up through the 2026 budget, I just want to remind all of you that really, the sole role of government is to protect individual creator and down rights, which are liberty, freedom, pursuit of happiness, and personal property. So, and you can correct me, but as we're heading to a $90 million annual budget, or more already, is our goal to go to $100 million? You have about $26, $27 million of debt that's still in the books for 9/11 center, distressed pension plan, funding. So as you go through and you are approving item by item, remember that the sole role of government is not to redistribute wealth from one business or one preferred entity to the other. It's not to hand out favors. It's not to have slush funds. It is to protect the citizens of their creator and down rights. So is there a goal? I'm hoping to cut back to $75 million, $16 million, whatever that is. Because taxpayers have no moths. There's just no more. There's no more turn up to, and obviously, schools, municipalities, people are just throwing their hands up. They cannot spend more. But please ask you to have an analysis and really cut, cut, cut. We ask the federal government, Harrisburg, I ask you to cut. Mr. Granasco, I believe you were a witness to Mr. Kennedy's speech to me, or his contentions. Do you have a camera inside of the commissioner's office with? office with, with audio of that area? If so, please make sure it does not get destroyed, also in a common area outside that room. Make sure that it's not erased where it's needed. And...
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Messner. Any other public comment at this time?
Sir? No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, uh, closing comments from my colleagues. Mr. Sonato?
I have that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Joe and Ryan, anything perhaps that we have overlooked?
Sure.
No.
Thank you, both. Well, I appreciate everybody joining us today, and there being no other business to be brought before this board, I would request a motion to adjourn.
Uh, we'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Wish you all a good day.
Dan, what's happening?
Oh, okay. I'll tell ya, I got it.
They took the clock from me.
Well, you know, it's, uh, 10, 10:51.
Thank you. All right, I got it.